Good morning. It is Tuesday, November 5th, 2024, and I'll call to order the Story County Board of Supervisors. Please stand if you are able to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we adopt today's agenda, I just wanted to make note that there is a correction on the proclamation for the Durable Medical Equipment Providers Day. At the last paragraph, it says November 11th. That should say November 6th. So when there's a motion to adopt today's agenda, if that would be noted.
I would move adoption of today's agenda with the change in the proclamation.
Second, been moved in seconded. Merkin?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Haddon's? Aye. Now is the time for public comment number one. This is the period for the public to address topics on today's agenda. I am going to have, first is Auditor Lucy Martin come up to make a comment regarding today's election.
Good morning, Board. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. Today is the general election. Polls are open from 7 till 8 p.m. tonight. I'm just here to give everybody an update. We have had ballots jamming in multiple precincts. Probably the largest ones, Story City, and then Ames 18, and then Maxwell Zearing, and I'm not sure. There are more. Those are the ones I know for sure. So it's not great. I mean, everyone's distressed about this. But that's why we have mandated paper ballots in Iowa. That's why we have emergency bins. That's why results are unofficial on election night, and they're not official till next Wednesday when you'll canvass the results. So if the machine doesn't read your ballot right now, that ballot will be counted. And we have not been able to pinpoint the exact problem yet, which is also very distressing. We tested both ballots and machines. We pre-tested, and then we go through what's called public test. So why this is happening, we're working with our vendor on that right now. And when I have a fix, I will push that out to media. You know, I have no desire for Story County to be the poster child on national news tonight, but it might be. So when I know, you'll know. So yeah, not how we were hoping today would go, but that's why there's a contingency plan for everything. So I'm sure you've been hearing about it, maybe getting phone calls yourself, so.
Well, sorry to hear that. We have an excellent system here in Story County, and something can go wrong any day with anything. And, you know, if people are thinking about it clearly, they'll realize that this is not, this is a blip. This is something that happens, I hope. Yeah, but...
I wish I could explain why.
I know. That's, and that's hard on you, but just tell all your election officials, all your staff and everybody that we'll be thinking of you today, and we know what a good job you do, and we'll come through it.
Yeah, so as soon as we have a good answer, I'll push that out to media, traditional and social, so thanks.
That would be great. Thank you, Lucy.
Thank you, Lucy. Would anyone else like to make public comment on items on today's agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment number one. We move on to consideration of proclamation recognizing November 12th as Philanthropy Day. Supervisor Merkin, you want to...
Whereas for 19, yes. Whereas for 19 years, the Story County Alliance on Philanthropy has created awareness of philanthropy efforts in Story County and recognized over 80 outstanding adult and youth individuals, families, groups, and businesses throughout Story County who have exhibited outstanding financial or leadership support for many charitable causes. And whereas the purpose of the proclamation is to educate the public about the many examples of philanthropy that have occurred and continue to occur in Story County. And whereas the, it's philanthropy, I'm sorry. I'm confusing that. Whereas the Story County Alliance for Philanthropy increases awareness of philanthropy in Story County throughout the month of November as a part of National Philanthropy Month. End.
Whereas philanthropy can have many definitions, including adult and youth individuals, families, groups, and businesses that volunteer and donate time, effort, leadership, skills, knowledge, property, or money, or actively promote human welfare to improve quality of life, which enables everyone to celebrate the extraordinary change that fundraising and philanthropy have helped to create in our world.
And whereas there are many organizations committed to creating awareness of and providing recognition of philanthropy in Story County, which include Alliance Committee members, Boys and Girls Clubs of Story County, Child Serve, Friendship Arc, Good Neighbor Emergency Assistance, Iowa State Memorial Union, Iowa State University Foundation, Mary Greeley Medical Center Foundation, Octagon Center for the Arts, Story County Community Foundation, Story County Medical Center, The Ark of Story County, The Bridge Home, United Way of Story County, and Youth and Shelter Services. And whereas Story County Board of Supervisors recognizes the value of philanthropy in helping many individuals in Story County, now therefore be it resolved that we, the Story County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim November 12, 2024, as Philanthropy Day in Story County. On behalf of our community, we encourage all citizens to recognize the many philanthropic efforts of our citizens. I move the proclamation.
Second, been moved in seconded. Basil?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Haddon's? Aye. And I believe we have someone here, Jazz, who would like to make a few comments? And we will, I just want to say is we will do a picture, but we'll do them after we do the second proclamation as well.
Yep. Thank you all. Linda, Lisa, Latifah. So my name's Chaz Weber. I'm here. I represent Good Neighbor Emergency Assistance within the Alliance, the Story County Alliance for Philanthropy, which includes 14 different nonprofits in Story County. An interesting thing this year is, I mean, every year we try to have nominations and potential winners of the usually five award categories throughout the whole county. This year, two nominations were submitted by Main Street Nevada. Of those, they were both considered winners this year. The first one for an outstanding business philanthropist was State Bank and Trust, and the other was outstanding volunteer fundraiser, which was Krista Skaggs. More information about their individual efforts and why they were nominated can be found on the storycountyphilanthropy.org website. The philanthropy alliance would like to thank Story County Board of Supervisors for their recognition of philanthropy in Story County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And as I said, we'll take, get a picture after we do the next one as well. So next we have a proclamation for Doable Medical Equipment Providers Day. Supervisor Basil?
Sure. Whereas Congress has not designated a day for durable medical equipment providers, which would honor all DME providers. DME providers are a big part of healthcare and help people maintain, remain at home with the appropriate DMEs such as oxygen, CPAPs, and hospital beds. And whereas there are over 6,000 DME companies in the U.S., this number does not account for all the staff, including professionals at those 6,000 companies.
And whereas millions of Americans have benefited from durable medical equipment, it has allowed them to remain at home or active instead of confined to a facility or home. And whereas the men, women who work in durable medical equipment go to patients' homes, facilities, hospitals, et cetera, to deliver the equipment such as oxygen and nebulizers.
And whereas thousands of DME providers work in conditions where they are exposed to infectious diseases and illnesses to care for their patients. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the Story County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim November 6th as Durable Medical Equipment Providers Day, and we encourage our citizens to celebrate and appreciate these men and women in our communities. I move the proclamation.
Second, been moved in seconded. Merkin?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Haddon's? Aye. And I don't believe we had anyone who wanted to make comment at this time, but we will do some pictures. So we'll start with the philanthropy. Thank you.
Thank you.
And this is, this is great. Thank you. Now do a picture for durable medical equipment. No agency reports. Next we'll move on to consideration of minutes.
I would move approval of minutes as presented.
Second.
Been moved in seconded. Basil?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Haddon's? Aye. Consideration of personnel actions.
I move approval of personnel actions as presented.
Second. Been moved in seconded. Merkin?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Haddon's? Aye. Consideration of claims.
And move approval of claims as presented.
Second.
Been moved in seconded. Basil?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Haddon's? Aye. Consent agendas. Anyone pulling anything from consent? No?
I move approval of the items on consent agenda.
Second. Been moved in seconded. Merkin?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Haddon's? Aye. Now we're on to public hearing items. We have second consideration of ordinance 321 and ordinance amending chapter 32 of the Story County Code of Ordinances. Good morning, Andrea and Marcus.
Good morning, Board. All right, so second consideration of the road renaming that we went over last week. During that time, I did reach out and speak to Amanda Pyle, my 911 person that I talked to over at the Sheriff's Office, and confirmed that with the changes, even if someone were to give the old address, they would dispatch EMS, fire, they'll all be able to still get that sorted to the correct location. We did get an email this morning that I forwarded to you all, just asking about the process, and I believe that person is here, or on the Zoom call. With that being said, I can go through the names again, or, you know, at our last meeting, if you want to jump a couple slides, there's comments. So at the last meeting, people expressed that they didn't want their address to change. We went over how we can't not change the address now that there's no access off of Highway 30 anymore, and there was concern about the name. And the direction that you all gave us at that meeting was to hold second consideration. So we didn't make any changes to anything like that. And with that being said, can take any other additional questions that you all may have. But again, staff would recommend approval of this and request waiving third consideration.
How many people again responded saying they didn't like the name that lived in the area where the name would be changed?
Well, the one person who brought up that, the one person who was speaking doesn't actually live on the road that will be changed.
I believe only one individual actually lives on the street that has the new name. The other two were churches, Iowa DOT property, and the other individual who spoke does not live on the newly named road, if that's not in Lincoln Lake.
Just within
I believe so.
Within a quarter mile of everything happening, so received a notification. So again, we understand that changing your address is a hassle. However, EMS and those services take precedence over that. We have to correct this or make this change now that their access is gone, so.
Any other questions before I open the public hearing? Okay, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. If anyone would like to make public comment and you're in the public meeting room, please come forward or over to the mic. If you're online, please raise your hand, and I do see someone online would like to speak. Luke?
Hello, thank you. I'm representing Crossford Baptist Church and wasn't able to make the meeting last week, but just also had hoped that we could request a different name for the street, something a little simpler and easier. I didn't hear the reasonings for what was decided either, so. But yeah, just wanted to state that as well and see what the options might be moving forward.
Thanks, Luke. Marcus, I believe what you said last time it was with the city of Ames. It wasn't just the county able to make that name determination. Is that right?
So within, within two miles, we work with the cities, create continuity. So the city of Ames has a whole list of naming conventions on how they name new roads. Part of this is also in city of Ames, so we work with them. They gave us a list of options for this. They have everything sectioned out by different things. This was from that list. It was not a county staff was just like, oh, we're just picking names out of a hat. We're given a list, chose from that list. So again, if you all would like to make some change, you can direct us to do that, and we will...
And what's all involved if, yeah, that's the direction the board would like you to do?
We'll have to go back, work with Ames again, and then we'll have to republish everything. We'll have to go through all the hearings again, all of that. But these roads are active right now. So there's a significant, you have not just the one individual that actually lives off of this, but then you have the churches and the DOT. These are active roads people are using now, so.
And the issue is that they would remain unnamed until
Correct.
whatever, publishing and public hearings and notifications and everything, if we were to start over.
And the other thing to consider is just within two miles of Ames, that's within where they can annex. And when you look at the Ames 2040 Plan and their annexation plans.
I mean, the, well, part of it is the two churches in the DOT building is not, but Ames surrounds that. So again, whatever Ames does is what Ames does, but that's where we are. So, but you all give us direction, and that is what will happen.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to make public comment? Okay, if not, I'll close the public hearing. Any further discussion or direction or motion?
I would move approval of ordinance 321, amending chapter 32 of Story County Code of Ordinances and waive third consideration.
Second.
Been moved in seconded. Basil?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Haddon's? Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
And the next steps then, we have to publish this notice. Notices will go out to everyone. They'll have all their updated addresses beforehand. I'll work with the post office about letting them know as well, all those things. It won't just be, it didn't just happen just now, so there will take about a week or two to finalize that all.
And I'm glad we did the second consideration because that gives some people some time if they wanted to comment but didn't, weren't able to before, so.
Got the email this morning.
That's more time to understand the process as well. So, thank you.
All right, thank you, Board.
Thank you.
We don't have additional items. Departmental reports. We have General Assistance Quarterly Report. Good morning, Erin.
Morning, Erin. Okay, good morning. You have my report. I, I don't have a whole lot to highlight on here. It's the first quarter, and we've just continued doing business as usual. I think applications you can see on here, we're, we're doing over 100 a month, and that's pretty consistent. Since we've had, we've had 344 in the first quarter. We have had new staff over this quarter, so new VA director. I've had a new service coordinator. So lots of learning and, and teaching and stuff like that going on. But we've been able, we were able to, on the GA side of things, get McKenna up and going fairly quickly, and within a month, we're taking people, you know, on a regular basis without having to turn people away and that kind of thing for not having enough staff, so that has been good. And we finally, October 1st, so July, August, September, so this is a little forward, but we got the VA and the GA paperwork all in order and everything, so our veterans can also access our centralized intake for rent and utilities. Yeah, so that's really good. Little behind schedule from what I wanted, but we got that done. And probably the biggest VA thing is you'll get most of my stats and stuff like that when Zach gives you his report, which I think he did last week, because he's got a new way to track that, so I just put my information in there. And we have our big supermarket of benefits on Saturday from 9 to 12 at the Plex. So if anybody wants to pop out there and see us, that's where we'll be. Any questions?
Don, thank you for your work, and I hope you have a great turnout at the Plex.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to it.
Previous years.
Yeah.
It's a great event.
All right, great. Is there anything that you would like to see on this report or anything tracking wise that, that you think is kind of missing? It's been this in this formula for a long time, and so I was just...
I think one thing is when you have denials or referrals, do you have like an idea of, is it because they're over income a reason for the denial?
Right. I think the last time I was here, you asked me what my second most frequent denial was, and I still don't have that answer yet. But at that time, it was over income is our most, most frequent one. So yes, there are different reasons. If people are a student, if we've assisted them in the last six months, things like that. I could definitely break those down because I do keep track of those.
I just think it would be interesting to know.
And it would be good to know how close to that cutoff
Yeah.
people, people are, you know, the just, are you just over income? You know, are there a lot of people that are really close but still don't make it? Like, is there a missing bubble, you know? Is there a group that...
Is you're really close, like within $100, or what do you think, you know, what would you kind of? I mean...
I think however you want to
Yeah.
Check the data.
When, when did we increase the income limit last?
So we've been doing it by 2% each
Okay.
each year. After we did that big study or, you know, and really kind of drilled down the data a little bit, we bumped it up there. And then ever since then, we have continued to do that each year.
Do you remember what year that was? I sure don't.
I feel like it was like five years. It was right before I joined the board.
Okay.
Yeah, so Laura's was on the board at that time, so.
I believe so. Okay, so it would have been five.
Yeah, and since then, we've had some pretty serious inflation.
Mm-hmm. And ours are still fairly low if I was going to compare.
That might be interesting to see some comparison data.
Mm-hmm. If you want like, like-sized counties, is that what you're thinking?
I think I would. Like size and adjacent.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Erin.
Moving on to other reports, we have discussion and direction for law books from the Justice Center.
Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
Yes, I got it in my memo. We're going to talk about some law books that are currently at the Justice Center in what is currently still technically called the Law Library, but plans with the remodel project we have going out there that that room is going to be transitioning into deposition rooms. So as you can see from my memo, we have a handful of books in that room, estimated to be about 7,700 books dating back to 1856. Now, I've been working with Tim Mills, County Attorney, on what is the appropriate thing to do with these books. He did some reaching out to the local law schools and the state. They didn't have any interest in, in the books because they have copies of those that they already have on hand, so I decided I'd bring this to the Board so we can kind of discuss what is the appropriate thing to do with these law books. Newest ones being in 2010, various year ranges in there. I didn't look at each individual book. We didn't count each individual book either. We just kind of measured off about 10 feet, determined, because the books are all about the same size, determine how many books were in a 10-foot span, and then just measured the total linear footage of books. And so I'm guessing somewhere between 7,000 and 8,000 books. Some year ranges have more volumes than others. So some of the options that were mentioned to us is donating them. Who else do we reach out to that might be interested in them? Do we try to sell them? I mean, we, we have means to sell county property. We have a couple of auction services that we've used on various other things. So that's kind of it in a nutshell. Looking for ideas.
Do any of the, have any of the libraries, like local libraries, been contacted to see if they
I have not.
Want them?
I mean, I'm, I'm willing to reach out to about anybody. I think it comes down to, I'm looking for direction on, if nobody's interested in them, what's our next step? Because we also have kind of a timeline of in the next month or two that we would like to have a, a new home for them.
I would think some of them might have some value, something dating back to 1856, and I'm sure it's in good shape if it's just been there.
And
I think some of the older ones I'd try to put online and sell.
Yeah, I, I think that's, that's a good place to start because I would make the assumption that the older the book, the more, if it has value, it would be in the older volumes.
Mm-hmm. You could also just, you know, once you get them, you know, if you do that and you get some money out of those, you could also, whatever's left, maybe contact a local bar association and just have a day where people could come get them if they wanted them.
And what happened?
I believe, I believe the county attorney reached out to like Drake Law
Yeah.
and two other places, and they did not want them.
Yeah. Well, yeah, they've already got copies, and, and this has got to be a lot of linear feet, 70.
Yeah, there's a, like I said, the, you know, the books are roughly this by this and about three to four inches thick. And yeah, there's almost 8,000 of them, so.
What happens when we put other things up for auction and nobody, nobody buys them?
We, a lot of times we just dispose of it and, you know, whether it's just throw it away or recycle it. I mean, that does happen.
Okay.
We, we don't sell everything that we try to.
Right, right. Well, I mean, I think that makes, yeah, I mean, I, we, I feel like we've been talking about this for a long time.
We have.
Put out feelers a number of times over the years.
And we've, you know, and it took some time to make the determin- And we've, you know, and it took some time to make the determination on who actually owned them. So we had to work with the court system. And yeah, the determination was made that they are Story County property. But yes, we've, we've, you know, we've tried various options in the past. Because it's not the first time that we've talked about these books. It's just now we actually have a plan to remodel that space, so.
Yeah, in some ways, if we had some space that we were going to, you know, in all our office, our, our, all our study for office space remodeling, if we had a place that we were going to keep some select things that are of historical value, it would be kind of cool to keep that first set.
Yeah.
But we don't really have a plan for that now. And it's going to be a few years before we're there. You know, if you and your judgment thought there's some we really should just keep in that eventuality, we could probably find a place for two hundred books. But we're not going to find a place for eight thousand books. And why should we keep something that's a twenty-ten version when?
Everything is online.
The Code of Iowa is all online.
Yep.
Yeah. You know, go back to something that isn't online anymore as if historical significance. Yeah, let's find the room for them.
Yeah, and a lot of those older volumes too, you know, they're handwritten. So that, that, that's, you know, that's kind of neat how.
Written.
The old, that first, the first few volumes in that set of two hundred from eighteen fifty-six.
Have you talked to Ames History Museum? Or Nevada?
I'm going to go with maybe. Because like Latifah said, we've talked to various agencies over the years, but it wouldn't hurt to.
Yeah.
They've got.
Come again.
And they've got more room now because they just reopened. And they've got, you know, significant room. They might be the, locally, your best shot at it.
For those older ones, you're.
Yeah, for the older ones, yeah. I don't care about the twenty-tens.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think ultimately I just, what I'm looking for is exhaust all other avenues. And if it comes down to it, we're comfortable in recycling.
I think, I think.
Makes, that makes a lot of sense.
Makes a lot of sense.
Okay. All right.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Joby. Okay, next we'll move on. We have direction and decision on pausing future claim payments to the city of Rowland pursuant to the City of Rowland American Rescue Plan Act Agreement.
Oh, good morning.
Morning, everybody.
Good morning again.
There we go.
And Crystal, you want to pull your mic up? But, but both Crystals can pull your mics closer.
Okay. So, uh, should I just start?
Sure.
Okay, so first I wanted to give the Board a little background. In two thousand and twenty-two, the City of Rowland applied for and received a sub award from Story County of American Rescue Plan Act or ARPA funding to upgrade city storm sewer systems and water main looping. In May of this year, the City of Rowland accepted bids and, for the project, and awarded a contract. In August of this year, an unsuccessful bidder, Steel Excavating, filed a lawsuit against the City of Rowland alleging that the city's award of the contract was unlawful since Steel Excavating was the lowest bidder for the project and did not receive the contract. The matter is currently set for trial on February twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five. However, just yesterday, Steel Excavating filed a letter with the court requesting that a hearing be set as soon as possible as they are seeking a preliminary injunction. They are requesting that the court enjoin the city from allowing work to continue on the project until that February twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five trial date. So now why we're here. Story County is obligated to monitor and oversee the City of Rowland's project to ensure compliance with the federal and Iowa code. And pursuant to the federal code, under these circumstances, the county must consider taking enforcement action. One enforcement option available to the county pursuant to the federal code is to temporarily withhold cash payments pending correction of the issue. Today, the county outreach and special projects manager is seeking direction and a decision from the Board regarding this issue. One option for the Board is to terminate the agreement with the City of Rowland and seek recoupment of the payments previously made by the county. Another option for the Board would be to continue with the agreement and to continue making payments for the project. However, a concern with continuing to make payments on their project would be if the federal government seeks to recover these funds, one million dollars, from Story County. A third option would be for the Board to pause all future payments on claims the county has not yet received until the court makes their determination whether a law violation has occurred. And so that is why we are here before the Board seeking direction.
Questions?
All future payments on claims not received. So that would mean if, if we already have a claim for work done, that, to go ahead and pay that claim out? And it's anything forward from today's date that we would receive? Am I understanding that?
That is an option for the Board, yes.
Okay.
Do we have an idea as to how much have been paid and then what's been pending?
So far, we've paid out two hundred and fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and sixty-nine dollars and thirty-five cents. That's two, five, nine, three, six, nine, dot, three, five. And claims submitted and ready to be submitted to the auditors would be two hundred and seventy-five thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars and eighty-one cents, two, seven, five, three, one, five, dot, eight, one.
So the pending would be the two seventy-five, three, three, one, five, eight, one?
Yes.
Would be an option to pay that, but nothing beyond that, if I understood?
Yes, that is an option for the Board.
Okay.
That is correct. Yes.
What was the date of the lost claims, had been, do you know?
Just a brief, hang on. September seventeenth? Oh, I'm sorry, hang on. October second, I'm sorry, October second, two thousand and twenty-four.
Thank you. Um.
So if, if we were to go with option three and pay out the pending, the total amount paid would be five hundred and thirty-four thousand, six hundred and eighty-five, sixteen. Basically half.
That is correct.
What was that number again? Five, three, four, six, eight, five, and sixteen cents. Thank you.
So Steel is seeking a preliminary injunction, which means stop work.
That's correct. Um, no hearing has been set yet, though.
No hearing set. If we were to pause work, we've still paid out five hundred and thirty-four thousand. So if Rowland were to lose this, what would our options be then? To try to recoup that money from Rowland?
Pursuant to the ARPA contract, that is an option for the Board.
Okay. And we won't know till, so February twentieth is the trial date. They're not asking that to be moved forward. So we won't know for a few months after that, maybe.
That is correct. The Court could take time to issue its ruling after the trial.
It usually do, okay. So did Rowland let us know about this problem?
Yes, they verbally told us when we were there for our annual site visit.
What date was that?
August fifth.
August fifth. And when did Steel submit its action?
It was filed on August second.
Michelle, I, I mean, I, I think the, the option that I would feel most comfortable with would be to go ahead and pay out the claims that we have already, but pause future claim.
I would agree with that. Given this is November fifth, there may be some more work out there that's not been billed to the city. But at this point, we're looking at, you know, we may need to recoup this money. We don't want to get any more money out there. This claim, you know, the claim of October second has been approved.
We've proved it.
You've proved it eternally.
Ready to submit it.
Um. I would agree with what you're saying. I, we, I don't think we can get any further because we just, if we have to recoup this money, we don't know what's going to happen. And I know the City of Rowland is in some situation now, but we're also in a situation where our tax dollars might have to come into play if things get difficult. So I think we need to limit our liability at this point.
I think the fact that you received, or notified of the letter from Steel for the preliminary injunction plays into kind of the decision as, as well.
It's possible that the Court will order the work to stop. It is possible if that, after that hearing takes place.
Nice. And we don't know when that hearing will be, is that correct?
It's not yet set.
Okay.
And it hasn't been determined if the Court will even have that hearing. The Court, it was just, it, a letter was filed yesterday.
Okay.
Requesting that a hearing be set as soon as possible to make that determination.
Okay, okay. Is there a motion?
Do we need a?
Do we need a, I'm assuming we need a motion because you want direction and decision?
That's, that is correct.
So they would like a motion?
Okay.
You don't want to allow some time?
Oh, I, I can.
Yeah.
Anyone would like to make some comments? If so, please go to the podium, state your name.
Curtis Bauer, the Mayor of Rowland. The way that I understand, pursuant to the attorney that we have represented us in this matter, our defenses are completely covered. And if you, if the Board were to decide to halt those funds today, you run the risk of the time clock running out by the two thousand and twenty-six deadline. We would also like to note that the City of Rowland would bear probably all of the cost if it were to be decided to go the other way. And my understanding is ARPA is covered under chapter twenty-six. So the Court would decide what their ruling would be pursuant to chapter twenty-six. So we would have a clear understanding from the Court in this case. So. Is there anything else that you guys might have questions for me?
Um, I don't, thank you.
I don't.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Dalton Johnson, Public Service Supervisor. I just want to clarify how your staff did it. If I'm understanding it correctly, if you put a pause on it, when we did this, I was understanding that it is a water main looping project and a sewer main. Are we stopping the entire thing? Or are we just stopping the sewer, the stormwater sewer? Because that's what Steel is working or with his lawsuit on. Could we continue the water main is what I'm considering? Does that, does that make sense?
I think so. So, so the water main looping, could you say that again, just so I'm clear on that?
So we have the water main looping, which that was sent out to bid. And Hall's Excavating did win that bid. And then there is the stormwater side of it. And that is what Steel is currently contesting.
What are the relative amounts on both of the projects? How much is the water main looping now? Of the total?
Of the total?
Mm-hmm.
I can give you how much has been paid out.
Okay.
Um, so for water main looping, paid out was so far is eighty-eight thousand, one hundred and thirty-seven dollars and thirty cents. That's eight, eight, one, three, seven, dot, three, oh. Um, they just submitted claims for fourteen thousand, two hundred and fourteen dollars and twenty-three cents. So one, four, two, one, four, dot, two, three.
And are those numbers part of the overall claims and pending claims?
So what's been, what I just gave of the eighty-eight thousand number is what's been paid for water main looping.
Okay, but not, as you mentioned before, paid claims were two hundred and fifty-nine thousand. So I'm just wondering, is that eighty-eight thousand part of those broader paid claims?
Correct.
Okay.
So Nathan, if I'm understanding you correctly, you're asking that permission, that you could continue with the water main looping, but that we would seize the money on the other part, on the wastewater?
I'm just asking for clarification if this is treated, being treated as one or individual?
Um.
I would prefer to keep going with the water main if we can, because there are other things up to it.
I'm sure you would. I'm just wondering how ARPA will view this claim? If they, it will view it as two separate claims or one claim? Or one award?
Issue, just to bring up to the Board, it was one agreement and one award and one application. It was a bundle.
That's why I'm afraid we could get into some, yeah, difficulty in terms of that. Because how it was originally awarded, and then you asked to do something different? And we said yes, and whether that, that does not really change that it's one.
Grant.
Oh, yeah, one grant. I, I'm a little leery about it. So I, I'm, thank you for bringing that, it up, Nathan.
Dalton.
Dalton. Dalton, I'm so sorry. Okay, yes, thank you. Thanks, Dalton.
Any other comments? If not, I do believe that you would prefer a motion of direction and decision.
I, yeah, I really, I really feel like going with the third option is, is the best possible option for all parties. Because I think we all recognize there's a, there are claims that need to get paid. So I would make, I would make a motion that we move forward and pay the claims that have been received to date, but pause future payments until, until a decision is made by the Court.
Second motion.
Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Basil?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Haddon's aye. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Uh, any upcoming agenda items?
Not at this time.
Nope. Now is the time for public comment number two. Comments from the public on items not on this agenda. The Board may not take any action on the comments due to requirements of open meeting law, but may do so in the future. If anyone would like to make public comment, if you're on. If anyone would like to make public comment, if you're online, please raise your hand. If you're in the room here, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close public comment number two. Liaison assignments, committee meeting updates and announcements. Supervisor Merkin, want to start us out?
I can, just a second.
Later today, there's a ribbon cutting at the Story City Fairway. That's going to be a really good thing for the community. Looking forward to that one. Will hope to be in attendance tomorrow, working on a drainage tile wetland project again with the county attorney's office in conservation. We're still trying to move that forward in Story County. I have a personal appointment. We have a request for administrative recount only if necessary for the election Thursday morning. Then I have personal appointments in the afternoon. Some meetings on Friday. VA supermarket is on Saturday, as Erin mentioned before. Next Monday is Veterans Day.
Thank you, Supervisor Basil.
I have the Story City Fairway ribbon cutting this afternoon. Tomorrow I have a housing action plan meeting in the morning. And then there is a, city of Ames is doing a public information open house for their sewer utility infrastructure extension. I might, I might go and attend that and just listen in. Thursday morning, I have the request for administrative recount on my calendar. An alternatives arrest diversion meeting in the afternoon. And then Women of NACO executive team meeting after that. And Friday I have my outreach catch-up meeting with Greg. And then AI Leadership Academy meeting on Friday. And then the Veterans Supermarket on Saturday. And then, yeah, happy Veterans Day on Monday.
So, great. Thank you both for reminding me about the ribbon cutting. I will plan to attend that this afternoon as well. This week's a little bit lighter week for me. I have Thursday, of course, the administrative recount. Friday I do have a de-cap meeting. Monday's holiday, it's Veterans Day. Thank all of our veterans and just remind folks that we do have the Veterans Supermarket at the Flex on Saturday, Saturday morning. Oh, yes, and that we are closed on Monday for Veterans Day. Thank you for that reminder. Remind everybody to go out and vote today if you haven't already done so. And with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Merkin?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Haddon's aye, we are adjourned.